All right, we've got nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. Yeah, in it, we have Mr. Morris on the phone? Can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
All right.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, good. All right, we're gonna open up with prayer at first. Before we start the prayer, I'd like to ask us to take about a ten-second moment of silence for our country, for unity, after seeing what happened over the weekend. I think something like that needs really be focused on from here forward. So if you would. All right, Mr. Fulton, do you want to lead us in prayer?
I will. If you would, bow with me, please. Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you, Lord, for what you do for us, God. We, in light of recent events, Lord, we just pray that you would be with this, with this county, with our country, as we strive for unity. We just pray that you would just closely watch over us, God. Also be with us today as the county does their business and let it be pleasing to you. And we pray all things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation,
One nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have is presentation of the Association of Supervisor Scholarships. We've got two individuals, Avery Rogers and Elijah Coates, here today to receive scholarships. If y'all would come forward, we'll come down and present this.
Yeah, where are you going? What are you trying to say? Radiology, yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Amendments to the agenda. Mr. Cumbus?
I don't have any.
Mr. Morris?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
I don't have any. Mr. Bossarge?
None.
Chancery clerk?
None.
Administrator?
There's a couple of things that we wanted to add. Public defender is here for a discussion in open session. I guess we could put that under department heads. It's related to their coverage of the city courts in two of the cities. And then also a discussion item regarding a contract in the recreation department for grass cutting.
All right, road manager?
None.
Board attorney?
None.
Any other amendments to the agenda?
I've got one or two. I handed out the employee information that's been updated. I had to review a new compedit ad. And then I need to add an item under HR for insurance discussion.
All right, any other amendments to the agenda? All right, do we have a motion to accept the amendments as presented? We've got a motion by Mr. Cumbus. Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, general public comment. Is anybody here for general public comment? Okay.
I'm here today to talk about the use of a special exception overall in Jackson County. Right now, on Wednesday before the planning commission, there appears to be a gas station or convenience store going across the street from the Ocean Springs School District, and there's no problem with that in general, but the use of a special exception is not in the best interest of the shareholder. If he's applying for the special exception in his name, I could think he's Mr. Sandier Singh. I've never met the gentleman. But if he wants to, let's say, move his gas station into an LLC to protect against a slip and fall incident or something like that, believe it or not, then he loses the special exception. If he wants to sell his gas station to a different shareholder for whatever reason, or change the names of it, he cannot do that. So in these particular regards, it's not, I think, a lot of people's best interest to use special exceptions to get actually what they want. It's more appropriate to use rezoning. I know Jackson County has tried to, it's actually achieved putting these Dollar Generals through special exceptions, and you know what? I don't think Dollar General, because it's a big company, I don't think it's going to necessarily change hands, but even if the Dollar General, like the whole corporate company were to go out of business, that property would just sit there. So for these more permanent endeavors in Jackson County, it's more appropriate to apply for like a C1 and then just get it over with. Because if that's in the best interest of the people who are applying, you know, it just doesn't make sense to... The special exceptions, first of all, they're legally somewhat perilous for Jackson County to begin with, but then also for the people who are applying, it's not in their best interest. It's actually better. Their property investment is much more protected with a formal rezoning. They can transfer, they can move into an LLC. It gives them a wide array of flexibility. But if they're stuck with their name and then they try to sell it, if they can't sell their investment, then arguably it's a much less valuable investment to begin with. Like, we don't wanna tank people and say, well, the zoning is not permitted, you have to get a rezoning and all of that. That's too much trouble. Like, that's not a good use of the zoning law. Part of people's property investment is in the zoning law itself, so let's make it more permissible for people to have the maximum value with their property, and a special exception is action constraints for that use.
Would you put your phone on mute? I think there's getting a little bit of feedback in. All right, do we have any other public comments? All right. That brings us to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? Favor?
None.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, finance?
Good morning. The first item I have is the order approving the claims docket.
Motion by Mr. Cumbus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, second item I have is a resolution authorizing the inter fund loans for fiscal year September 30th, 2024.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor. Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the last item I have is the resolution authorizing the operating transfers for fiscal year September 30th, 2024.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Bossarge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion?
Any one in favor? None.
Any one opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resources?
Good morning. I have given you guys a updated employee information form, and the reason we're discussing it today are there some changes to some job descriptions that are on there. There's a new regulation that requires a minimum salary for certain types of positions that are exempt. If we don't have that minimum salary met, then we have to move them to non-exempt. So those positions you see there have been moved to a non-exempt status. There will be more to come. We'll probably have a few more at the next meeting. And then that minimum salary has, will be going up again in January. Unless I lost you this file to stop it, it'll go up again, so we'll be looking at making some more changes in January of '25.
What is the exempt, what is that number now?
The minimum salary number?
Right.
I think it's forty-three, eight-eight-eight. Let me make sure. It is, it's going currently, well, it's thirty-five, five-sixty-eight, and it's gone to forty-three, eight-eight-eight as of July 1st. And then if it goes up again in January, it'll be fifty-eight, six-fifty-six.
Jumping pretty high in January if nothing changes. A lot of these are changed to salary non-exempt, so. And not, not just hourly, if you will.
After January, assuming, again, assuming this all continues to happen, it'll go, they'll be adjusting it every three years for, I guess, like inflation and stuff, and try to keep up with that kind of stuff. So we don't have much of a choice in the matter.
Are there court challenges to that? I can't, there's so many court challenges on so many different...
There is one right now that, I believe it was Texas is going to the Fifth Circuit that challenged this very first one, but as of right now, it's effective, so. And then I'm sure there are gonna be some filed for the next one.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we just need to vote on that. Unless there's more questions. I'm happy to go into as much detail as you need.
There are ten terminations reported this month. Is that a high number?
Let me look at it real quick.
Some of them are retired. That's what I was gonna ask.
At that time of year where we retire.
Yeah, that's a...
I was gonna ask, is there any way we could redo that and not say terminated, say retired?
We can put it out in the reason over here under workday, whether you, you know, quit, or fired, or retire, or whatever. It's really classified that way, but we, I'm happy to put a reasoning up to the side.
Because I know there's three of those people on there retired, and I'm like, well, they wasn't terminated, and I'd hate for some public record to get ahold of that and think we...
Sure. Yeah, we can, those that are retiring, we can indicate that in the, in the last column over there.
Well, you don't need a new column, just say termination, comma, retired.
We can try to do that. This is a report, and so workday prints it out, and that's how it's done in the report. And so we try to clarify under HR comments, but we could see if there's a different way to run a report. I'm happy to look into that.
Okay. I have another question, primarily for Josh. There's multiple job or changes of jobs. Some of them talk about increased pay. Is that within budget constraints? Or is the budget looked at when these things are accomplished, or do they just happen?
Well, most of the time when they're doing reclassification, it should be somebody that's, somebody's left and then reclassifying into somebody else's job. So it should, most of the time, be within budget restraints. Now, I can't say occasionally, you know, especially at the ADC or or the Sheriff's Department, depending on what's going on, that occasionally there's some that don't sit through. But, I mean, it's all supposed to be within the original budgets that we...
Right. Okay, thank you.
I think I need to vote on that, right?
Oh, do we have a motion to approve employee information?
I'll move.
We've got a motion by Mr. Taylor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is just an update on the insurance. I believe it was last meeting we voted. We have, it been in further discussions with Cadence, and in this last meeting, we included, is it Veris? I think that's right. In addressing some concerns that were raised. I think we're all satisfied with the answers that we've received on that, and we are waiting on contracts to come through. The, we talked about the expansion of the network, and we will make a recommendation that we don't expand the network this, this year. And we look at our numbers and see if we have savings throughout the next twelve months, you know, give it a full year, and then we can make an informed decision at that point on whether or not we think an expansion of the network is feasible. We may need to have another meeting before the end of this month, once we get the contracts in, because we're starting to push up against where our deadlines are for making this happen before open enrollment. So we will be, as soon as we get the contracts in, we'll probably get with you guys to try to get a vote on those. Did I miss anything?
And IT is very comfortable with the transition.
Yeah, they've been in contact with them. They just, we have a deadline so that we can make sure it happens. And so we wanna make sure we get everything up and running, the contract signed, so that IT can make it all happen before open enrollment.
Good.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inventory.
Yes, I have a resolution authorizing the removal of sidearms from our inventory due to retirement of Deputy Roy Williams Morris and Deputy Stephen Eugene Richardson.
We've got a motion by Mr. Bossarge. Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So we've got, we've got a while before we get to those hearings. Do we have any action items?
Well, you got two more. One recreation, one public defender.
Yeah.
For discussion.
Okay, recreation.
Good morning. I would like to, with our current turf contract where we totally cuts all our Bermuda athletic fields we have, I would like to move forward ending that contract and exercising our thirty days. Their work has been unsatisfactory as of, since the contract started back in January. In fact, they've only cut the fields once since January, June 24th. They're spraying inconsistent, so we feel like we were prepared to move forward, ending the contract, end of the year, with some equipment we've ordered, and we're prepared to make, to move forward now. And, and take it on ourselves. We've got expecting fields now, getting our list. We've only spent about a hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of the contract. We may, I would probably do a budget request first for the next board meeting to request reallocation of all these funds for a couple of capital purchases of equipment, for some mowers and some sprayers and things like that.
Make a motion in that contract? Okay.
I'll second. Thirty days notice.
Yeah, just for the board, I did look at the contract this morning, and it basically says either party may terminate this agreement at any time for any reason by providing thirty days written notice of termination.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I've been in contact with April on it.
Right.
So.
Board's well within its ranks if it chooses to terminate the contract, yes.
All right. We had a, what, a motion by Mr. Bossarge and a second by Mr. Cumbus? All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I guess.
Hold with defender.
Good morning. I'm here this morning. I think the board is well aware that our office has been in Ocean Springs and Goshay Municipal Court representing felony clients and misdemeanor clients. We have recently found Attorney General opinions that say, as a countywide office, we are required to represent felony clients in municipalities. However, if we are representing misdemeanor clients, we are to be compensated for it. Our office has been doing this since 2019. It was something that when Judge Taylor took the bench in Ocean Springs, he asked us to do. And we have been representing clients in these courts since then with no compensation. Recently, our circuit court dockets have gotten very heavy. We have, this term which starts today, we have eleven cases set for trial. So we have, we need all attorneys on deck in circuit courts. So these municipalities and the misdemeanors have been taking up a numerous amount of time. So we are asking if we can propose to the cities that they compensate us for our representation of the misdemeanor clients in those cities. We are proposing for Goshay fifteen thousand dollars, and for Ocean Springs, twenty-five thousand. And we're asking that these MOUs be looked at every year, and if we choose to renew them, they be renewed.
Did you have a method of determining those numbers based on case volume, or were you just being nice and coming up with lower numbers?
No. So there is a statute that requires that if we are not there to represent clients, that the court will have to pay two hundred dollars an appointment for a case. So we looked at our amount of cases that we have in each city. In Goshay, it is more, it is smaller than it is in Ocean Springs. Ocean Springs requires much more time. Sometimes our public defender that is handling it is not getting out of court until 10:00 PM, after she has been at work since 8:00 AM. So Ocean Springs does carry a lot more time than Goshay does. So that is the factor that we looked at when we were deciding the amounts. We also have looked at, Pascagoula is paying Scott Corlou eighteen thousand a year, we believe. Moss Point, we're not sure, but we do know that Cameron McCormick is receiving benefits as well as a salary. So we believe that those amounts would be reasonable. And to give an example, last Wednesday, Ms. Shireman had nine cases on the docket, so that would have cost Ocean Springs eighteen hundred dollars just for that one court night.
If they decide not to do it, then I guess we would not represent those people in their courts.
Yes, and they would have to either appoint case by case, or hire someone to handle the cases.
So do they have court every week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so y'all are there every week?
Yes, sir. Goshay is on Monday afternoons, and Ocean Springs is Wednesday evenings.
We wail within our right to...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, I'm just sitting here thinking that, I don't know that the board necessarily needs to vote today, but if you want to direct me to prepare some, some MOUs, we could add those after the the jail contracts, maybe put in that they run concurrent with the term of the board supervisors and the city council. They can be amended during that term with the board and the city council's approval. I don't think it'd be that hard to do this at all. And I could, I could prepare some, some draft MOUs for the next board meeting for the board to consider and vote on.
Okay, sounds good.
I would suggest, rather than a flat number that, that is kind of based on activity today, you use, like, the research that you found, a per-case amount. That way, five years from now, we won't be saying, oh, man, look at it, it's twice as that, and we haven't changed, and we've gotta do it. So I would suggest you do that, at least think about it.
Okay.
We build a monthly for that, wouldn't we, Josh?
Just depends on what we agree to in the inter local.
If we build a monthly, then you could tell us how much you, how many cases you took on every week for the month. Wouldn't that be right?
Yeah, we can go back and look at the number of cases that she generally hears and compare that to the, what she's proposing, and then have it there as two options for everybody to agree to.
And I like the idea of saying it's X number of dollars per case we handle. And that way, there's no misinterpretation or anything.
Okay.
And maybe put escalation clause in it for that, because that rate is gonna go up also with their pay.
Well, that may be kinda tied to statute, because I think she said the statute says they have to pay so much per case.
They have to pay two hundred.
Right.
If they are appointing.
Okay.
So if they, if they chose to not hire us, they have the ability to, any criminal defense attorney, they can appoint them to represent. And so they would have to pay that individual two hundred dollars, and that's set by statute.
Okay.
But you can go back and pull how many cases y'all heard in the last year.
Yes, yes, yes.
Let's do that, let's compare that times, you know, and just make sure we're, we're being reasonable at a rate in both cities.
Yes, we can do that.
And you say there's no reimbursement for felonies then, right?
No, and we are required to do that, so we have no problem if they choose to hire somebody else. We will still handle the felonies. Because, I don't know if y'all recall, last year when we were here, the law changed, and so if we represent somebody at initial appearance, we are that attorney until the case
Right.
is concluded, whether it be with plea or trial. So we don't mind, you know, we would rather be on the felony cases at the beginning.
Okay.
Now, Pascagoula and Moss Point.
Yes, sir.
You said, what, they actually have on-staff attorneys?
Yes, sir. They have their own public defenders that they have hired. Mr. McCormick has been there, I would say, five years, and he's been their public defender. Now, we do take conflict appointments from Moss Point. If there are several defendants, we will go to Moss Point and represent those, but those are usually on felonies.
Okay.
And Pascagoula, we were in Pascagoula, representing clients. There, some issues arose. We had a meeting, and they chose to hire their own public defender.
Good, and so the other two can do that also?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any action items?
No, sir.
All right, some supervisor items. Mr. Cumbus?
I didn't have any.
Mr. Morris?
Yes, I have two. I have a resolution to accept the resignation of Lorenzo Rivera from the Jackson County Planning Commission, and I motion for that.
We've got a motion by Mr. Morris. Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
B, I have a resolution to appoint Robert DuBose Jr. on the planning commission. I motion for that.
Got a motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
C, a resolution to appoint Melinda Harper to the Mississippi Regional Housing Authority, number seven. I motion for that.
We've got a motion by Mr. Morris.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, was that it?
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
All right, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
I don't have any. Mr. Bossarge?
Yes, I have a resolution appointing Randall K. Randy Harala to the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College Board of Trustees for Jackson County.
We've got a motion by Mr. Bossarge. Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hey, and also, too, I'd like to ask Joe to come up and give us a report on some road projects, if we could.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
All right, so can we just call Joe up without amending anything on this?
It's under our secretary.
Yeah.
Hey, will you give me a update? Hey, will you give me an update on the Vestry Bridge, the Beachview Bridge, and the Beachview Drive project we just awarded last week, or last meeting?
The Vestry Bridge, I met with a contractor, a subcontractor out there last week. I'm thinking about 30 days. They had the base material in. They were finishing up. They had paving, striping, and guard rail, approached guard rails to go. I'm thinking four weeks, maybe. That'll be, that'll be open. I've been getting one particular person, but I explained that to her even though she didn't want to hear it.
Yeah.
So, I did get an email from the engineer on the Beachview Drive Bridge last week, I think Thursday. He was meeting with a contractor, DNA, and they were working out a contract exactly what they were going to do, relocate the water and sewer line on the bridge, and he said he would give me some more information shortly. Once they figure out what they're going to do, then we'll meet with them and figure out what we're going to do and what our timeframe will be after that.
You did tell them the time is important. We need to get it done.
I explained that. What was the other one you wanted me to?
And then the Beachview Drive.
I think all we're waiting on, I hadn't talked to Jeff last week, but I think we're waiting on contracts, bonds, insurance, get all that together, and then we'll be ready to go.
And then paving out the county, what you looking at on that?
We're finishing up the other half of Washington Avenue here in Pascagoula this week, and then the pavers are gone for three months. They'll be gone for three months. I got a state job, and we won't see them again probably till next budget.
Okay.
Joe, I had one. I got an email from M.Dot late last week.
I haven't returned the call yet, but I will take care of that.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Any other road projects I want to catch up on?
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
So, that brings us to closed session to see if there's sufficient evidence for an executive session. And we've got a list of items.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ross, the first one is Jackson County versus George County, pending litigation in Chancery Court involving Sing River Services. The next is strategic business discussions with regard to Sing River Health System. And the third, it says potential litigation. That's actually pending litigation, Gulf Breeze Construction versus Jackson County.
All right. Do we have a motion to go into closed session to determine if there's sufficient evidence?
I'll move.
We've got a motion by Mr. Taylor.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No action was taken in executive session.
Pardon? He is on the phone. He is not here.
The first item we have on the agenda is 13317 Ruth Street in Ocean Springs. This is property owned by Michael Pleasant. We had him listed as being at, living at DeSoto Street in Ocean Springs now. We've had no correspondence with him. We've sent him notices. This is a burned house. And taxes have been paid on the house. But like I said, we've had no correspondence with the property owners. So we'd like to get this declared a menace so we can get this property cleaned up. As you can see, it's in, you know, terrible shape.
Yeah. And so he didn't, he never said anything and we haven't talked to him about it.
We've sent, we've sent notices. We have had no correspondence with the owners at all. They have not... Oh, I'm sorry. She said he called her this morning.
Sorry, I didn't have enough time to put on the thing. He did call this morning. He was sick. But he said whatever, you know, he understands that he couldn't be here and that, um, he understands that if y'all declared a menace, basically, then...
I would say we move forward the process and make sure he's aware of the quotes. And if he want, and if he thinks he can get a better price, I mean, give him an opportunity. But I'd say we move forward with it and...
You can make sure nobody's here.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna ask, yeah.
Always, when we do these, you know, if they clean it up prior to us cleaning it up, I mean, we can cancel anything that we've done. So, you know, we always tell them and give them that option.
Right. Yeah, well, I mean, I, that's the only thing I would think is give him an opportunity. If he can beat the price, to try to do that on his own. But otherwise, we'll go ahead and do it. But we'll find out if anyone's here for or against that, that menace property right now, today. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this? We don't have, we don't have anyone here. All right. So, what, go ahead?
You gonna make the motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion that we declare it a menace and move forward the process.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Bossarge. And as part of the conversation, I would say we'll just make sure he's aware and understands the price. And if he can get a better price, give him an opportunity.
If he reached out to her this morning, I'll have her calling back and letting her know that...
I did let him know that, um, we did, you know, get bids and we did take the lowest bid. He said that was fine. He just would pay all the taxes.
Okay.
It came to that.
Okay. All right.
All in favor?
All right. Motion carries.
Aye!
We have a few minutes before the...
We're already at the time for this one, so we can start it too.
Okay, 10:20, huh?
Yeah, we should run.
Gosh, no more time.
Yep. Now, I like the way they do it now. They do it in five minutes instead of 15 minutes.
Yeah, I know. That having to sit and wait's crazy.
Another burn.
Okay. The larger packet that you have is the original pictures for this house. The smaller packet is, is where you see the burned area. That's what we went out and took this past week. I'll explain that to you here. But then the next one we have is 16400 Colbert Road in Moss Point. The property owner is Ricky Lee Rains. And we've talked to Mr. Rains. I believe he's here today. Last week, he approached us about this property and told us that he wanted to try to restore it. And I offered some of my people to go out with him and inspect it, take a look at it. And that's the pictures that you have. That is the smaller pack of pictures that shows the burned structure. In my opinion, it's way too far gone to do anything with it. Mr. Rains is here to address the board and he'd like to discuss that with you. But of course, my recommendation is to go ahead and proceed with this menace and get this cleaned up. It's, it's beyond repair.
All right. All right, does he want to come up and...
First of all, I didn't have time to, I didn't even, I was in the burn circle for about a month. And I didn't, couldn't even work on the house till like end of February. They wouldn't release it because my burns wasn't healing. But I've been steadily cleaning the house. But when he took them pictures the other day, it was totally dark in there. And I got, I wish, I want you to look at the pictures in the daylight where I had the light on in the, in the rooms. All the rooms are smoked up, yes. Only one room is the living room, which half of it is burnt to the ceiling. The rest, if you can tell in the pictures, are just smoked up. I do need, I just need a little bit more time to clean, clean out the, um, the ashes. And I was just wanting to look at, look at my pictures, in the daylight pictures. Because he took the pictures in dark with no light at all, no flashlight. And I'd already cleaned out over half the house already. And I just wanted to show you and give me a little bit of extra time to try to save it because that's our only option really right now at the moment because the insurance dropped me on the house about before it happened. I just would like to see if y'all look at my picture.
Do you want to send the board those pictures?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, you're welcome to, if they want to see them.
You want to see them there?
Yeah, I'll glance.
I'm going.
This is all smoked up. This is the bedroom, which I cleaned out, which you can tell it was stacked up. It's all smoke damage. All the walls were burnt. Savage here. I guess I need to take all the panel and take all the shit off. Roof down, wire and all that, I don't even know. This is the bathroom. It's all smoked. This is the kitchen. And still the bathroom's on. I took a lot of pictures. This is the bedroom. Another wall was burnt. There's a ceiling. We got two bedrooms. This is the living room, where half the fire burnt, half the ceiling. And this is where, still a ceiling. I know this is the front of the house that burnt. I know the wall burnt on the front. That's all really burnt was right in here, half the living room, right there. And this is the rest of the house. You can tell it's, oh, the roof's totally there. This is the... This is smudged damage, mostly interior thing out.
Okay. All right.
Got it all?
Yeah, I guess I said it.
Marcus, has he been issued a permit to do those repairs yet?
It's... How long ago was the fire?
I'm not sure how long.
It was, it was a year ago. But I couldn't even work on the house after January because my burns weren't releasing. Then in May, for a whole month, I couldn't go in and, I had pre on. I popped my eyes. I was going to go in and let them.
That, that roof is burned. The walls are burned. And I, I don't think that he understands the complexity of, of what it would take to pull out all that, you know, burned stuff and the structural integrity of what's, what's there. It, I mean, he'd be way better off starting over from scratch. And I'm sure Mr. Bossarge could tell you. He's probably dealt with stuff like that.
The house is in bad shape. I go by there a lot. You know, it's in terrible shape. Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
I'm gonna make a motion. We proceed with the Minister Public, Cal.
Everybody have any other comments for or against it?
No.
We're not, uh, we're the last one.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Cumvis, a second by Mr. Bossarge. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye!
Hey, Marcus, before you leave, I'd just like to make a general comment to the board and to the folks out there in the audience. So, it's been a while since I've been to one of these Monday meetings that Marcus and his staff go to. But I just, I just want to take time out to recognize Marcus and his staff for the, for the fantastic job they do on a job that's probably the hardest decision that not only do they make, but we make as a board to, to tell somebody their structure's not livable, repairable, whatever. And it's a hard decision. But at the same time, we, we have to go through this process in this county to help... to help minimize the derelict structures in this county. If not, then we just become one big junkyard. And so, I was, I went to a court, uh, morning, Monday morning with Marcus and his, and his folks. And I gotta tell you, there was more menace to public health on there than there was almost criminal. Now, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing on the, on the docket side, but I can tell you that they do a great job at what they do. And I was, I was glad, it's been a while since I've been to one of them court hearings that they present all these menace and stuff to. So, I gotta tell you, they, they do a great job of what they do. And, and in this next budget, I'm gonna encourage this board to hire another code enforcement officer because I feel like that we don't have enough to keep up with what we're doing in this county. So, and I've already talked to Marcus about it. And I'd really like to support putting on another code enforcement officer for his department because they do such a great job. I don't wanna burn the ones we have in there out. So, Marcus, thank y'all, tell your staff. I appreciate it. I'm sure the rest of the board thinks that way.
Y'all do do a great job. I've been out there with Marcus. I told him he'd be carrying a gun.
It's dangerous, it's dangerous for sure.
This is probably one of the hardest decisions we make as a board, is the way I look at it.
Yeah.
And it's not easy to tell somebody that. I can tell you that. I've, I've had people call me on the phone crying, upset, and I get it. But at the same time, it's just the side of this job that, that we have to do to keep some kind of cleanliness in this county, so to say. So, yeah, so anyway, Marcus, thank y'all.
And then there's a deeper side to it too. I mean, if you allow things to be below code or below what's required, then you start to get to a point where it impacts your flood elevation, your flood insurance, your, your homeowner's insurance and all these other factors that people publicly have to get out and buy. And if you start impacting those, you jeopardize everybody who has kept their things in good conditions' rates. And our rates are already through the roof and terrible. We don't need to do anything that causes them to go higher. So, I mean, that, that's the downside. We have to, we have to balance that caring and trying to help people fix things with what's good for the entire county. And it is, it is hard. You know, I do not wanna be in your spot having to do that every day.
People don't understand exactly what our department does and what, you know, the complexity of our department. And I have to be the bad guy a lot of times, but I've learned to have thick skin.
Thank goodness he's got thick skin on, too.
But also, Jimmy...
Mr. Ross, I, I need to ask if the agenda be amended with regard to a review. It did not make the agenda, just overlooked it, on a review of a menace that the board declared a month or a month and a half ago. What's the gentleman's name?
It's 26711 Billy Hinton Road is the property address.
Yeah, this was the one that had the trailer on it, I believe, with some valuables in it or something to that effect.
That's correct. And he wanted to clean it up himself. And so the board gave him 30 days and it was supposed to be set for review today.
Right, and he's not here, but it, it's gonna end up being moot. But if we could amend the agenda, let, let Marcus address it. Because I think the property's being cleaned up and that'll allow me to prepare an order for Mr. Ross to sign saying that it is moot. So, we could just amend the agenda to address this review.
I'll make that motion.
We just wanna cancel that menace because he's cleaned the property up.
What's the address again? 26711?
26711 Billy Hinton.
Billy Hinton?
Billy Hinton.
Yeah.
Right.
We've got, we've got a motion.
And, and really, I mean, it was approved for a menace, but...
They gave him time on it.
They gave him time, but really, if we don't even act on it, I don't think it'll matter either way because the property's cleaned up, so...
I just didn't, right or wrong, I just didn't want that menace hanging out there without having some closure. And I can prepare a quick order for Mr. Ross to sign saying it's a moot, moot point because the property has been cleaned.
Correct.
And then our menace will be cleaned that way.
We had a motion, was it Mr. Bossarge made the motion?
No.
Mr. Cumbus made the motion, Bossarge seconded.
To rescind the menace?
No, no, just to amend the agenda.
Yes.
Just bring it up.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now if you just address the menace that was declared.
We just need to rescind the menace for 26711 Billy Hinton. The property's been cleaned up.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Cumbus, second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Thank y'all.
And before we go back into executive session, I need to amend the agenda. Rhonda's here and I've got a solid waste issue I'd like to bring before the board so that we can start taking some actions. But I'd like to amend the agenda under department heads to recognize solid waste.
Maury? We've got a motion by Mr. Bossarge, second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Hey, Rhonda? So, over the, over the last couple of weeks, we've been having a lot of, um, I'm trying to put this nicely, but a lot of folks that are, that are renting houses, the landlords or the owners or whatever of those houses, when they evict somebody, they just pile all the debris up by the end of the driveway and, and rely on us to pick it up. And we don't have the manpower to do that. And half that stuff, we can't even take to our landfill.
That's construction debris anyway.
Some of it is, but it's mostly bedroom suits and mattresses and refrigerators. And it's just, it'd just be a whole driveway apron full of stuff that, and the problem is, like in Gulf Park Estates, we only go once a week to Gulf, I mean, once a month for a week in Gulf Park Estates. And usually about halfway through the month, somebody's piling a bunch of debris up. And then it sits there for another two or three weeks before we can pick it up. And it's just, when we were talking about derelict homes and stuff, it's just unsightly. And so, I'm proposing we either do one or two things. We come up with an ordinance that doesn't allow these, these rental owners to pile that debris up. They gotta haul it off theirself. Or we add another truck for two week a month coverage in these areas instead of one week a month coverage areas. But it's just, this, this stuff is, is just blatantly getting out of hand, you know? And not only in Gulf Park Estates, you got St. Andrews subdivision, South Point, I mean, all these other places that are turning into rental homes, uh, uh, this is what we're getting stuck with. Rhonda, you, you...
Yeah, this happens all over.
Yeah.
It's all over the county. The main thing is, it's not even containerized. It's garbage and rubbish and it's all mixed up, you know? And we're sending out letters, but they'll fill the whole yard up. And some of it'll be in the street, some of it'll be all the way up to the house. You tell them to get it up, relieve the violation. Well, it's in the county easement. We don't, we don't have to do anything. Y'all figure it out. And then we can start pushing, you know, enforcement on them. But it's hard when we have this many move outs all over the county. We don't mind picking up, but the problem is when it's that much and we're trying to get what we can, just pluck out and leave the ruts, try to get them containerized so that Way Smashing can pick up part of it and then we can pick up the other part. We're spending a lot of time at each one of those. So, when we're spending that much time at that one house and there's somebody else that's not getting service. So, our goal is to cover, cover every street in the county. And that's what we're doing now. The trucks go down every street in this county. That's a lot of area to cover with five and a half trucks. So, I take it...
We basically can't afford to put on another driver, another truck. We're at the cap now and, and we just, we can't afford to do that. So, you know, the best thing we could do is amend the ordinance that we have now in place and, and maybe to put some fines in it. And Jimmy, you have to...
Yeah, Rhonda and Marcus, myself and April had a meeting last week to go over this issue. And Mr. Bossarge had reached out to me as well. So, we're already looking at it. Because I think what you're facing is if, if a homeowner puts something out, it's rubbish. But if a homeowner's leasing a house and that's a business, so to speak, and he just moves everything to the street, we're basically subsidizing his business. We're picking up his commercial debris, which is not fair to the county. So, we're looking at amending the ordinance. Right, we've gotta put some teeth in it to stop this type of behavior.
Intent of debris pickup is not to come empty a house.
Correct.
I mean, that's part of the ownership of rentals. Your, your job is to clean the house up when the tenant moves out. And that may not be good. It might not be fair. The tenant might have stiffed you on two months' rent, but it's still part of, that comes with it.
And then, then some of these people are out of town. And I've got a commercial establishment now. And it was one big owner. And then all of a sudden, he's sold off each one, each apartment section. And no garbage is being picked up there, as you can see.
And they mix it too. So, it's not like you can take it and load it up and take it to one landfill. You've gotta go to the landfill that allows that type of trash, whichever the worst degree of trash in the pile is.
They'll unload the refrigerator, put it in plastic bags along with the bedroom suits and, you know, all kind of stuff, and it's all out there. And then there's, we can't pick that up, you know?
And some of these are managed by different people. You know, their foreclosures, move outs, or just families.
The foreclosures are getting, are getting out of hand too, you know?
One thing Rhonda's talking about... We have our responsibility to pick up a certain amount of it, you know, based on our current ordinance.
Yeah.
But if it's beyond a few yards, then it's above what our ordinance says.
Three cubic yards is a pickup truck load, basically.
I don't know. It's, it's probably more like two pickup loads.
We pick up, on the average, if you look at our database, we pick up anywhere from five to eight yards per house.
And if someone goes over on general debris, that's fine. I mean, that's not really what we want, but I know people can't measure three yards versus five yards. They don't know, they're not even gonna measure that. But if you're putting out an entire house worth of furniture and things, that's a whole different story.
We just need to revise the ordinance so that we can address situations like this. So, let us look at that and we'll...
The road manager has bailed me out many a times. And I'll call Joe and say, "Look, I got three streets. I need you to go make a clean sweep on that because it's, it's just getting out of hand. Looks like after a hurricane," you know?
This is, the service we're providing is for maintenance. It's not for rebuild or building or renovation.
Say that specifically. So, we need to address the ordinance. We'll bring something back to you.
That's what I'm asking the board to do is give them the...
Make it a menace.
Yeah, really.
Address it under the menace statute. We, we just need to look at it.
All right.
Does there have to be a public, or public hearing or revision of the ordinance?
No.
You know, I, the question here is like, you know, there's probably a higher density in Gulf Park Estates versus the rest of the county. So, the question is, do we wanna, you know, this is a complex question, you know? But do we just wanna revise entire ordinance for the county? Because how are we gonna enforcing, like, if someone's debris's out there, how are we gonna know if this is a rental house or not a rental house? Like, that, that's a complex question. Like, how are we gonna know, like, we, we, or, I know Gulf Park Estates has a higher density of households and I do rent apartments in Gulf Park Estates, so I know, I know exactly the problem you're talking about. You know, the question is, is, yeah, it's very, I don't, I don't even wanna put that burden on the county so I just haul away. When this happens to me, I just get other people. But it's, it ends up being a windmill of probably thousands of dollars, like, so that is somewhat a hardship. And, you know, take her hardship of thousands of dollars. Like, this happened to me a few weeks ago.
Well, it could either be a hardship on the prop, the rent, the person that owns the rental house or it could be a hardship on the entire population of the county. And so, we're, we're in a position where we can't afford to pick it up, okay? So, we need, we're gonna have to adjust our ordinance to take care of it. Follow it?
My, my goal is to make it clean, make it easy, make it quick. I mean, we can't go through a long process for every house. It's just, it's just not workable.
Nope.
Jimmy, would this be an ordinance for solid waste?
Solid waste.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I answer the question? I don't think you have to have a public hearing, but it would be published in the newspaper to let the public know that it was a mess.
Correct.
All right. Well, thank y'all. Thank you, Rhonda.
All right, so that's it. So, we're ready to go back to executive session? All right.
Do we go back to closed session?
I think we just return to executive session.
Make the motion to return to executive session.
We've got a motion by Mr. Cumbus. Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.